I'd like to call the October 4th, 2018 meeting of the Lebanon County Commissioners to order, and as customary, we'll begin with a moment of silence. Thank you. Just join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America, and in the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Incidentally, if you haven't noticed, Commissioner Phillips is not with us today. He will not be joining us for the meeting. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dave Weis, thank you very much. Be back at the Gap update. We have the final totals in for fiscal year 18, which ended the 30th of September. We had 153,858 troops trained at the Gap. That was about a 20,000-man increase over last year, which is fairly significant. Our metric that we always follow, I've talked about, is man days. We were 860,000 man days plus, which is a tremendous year. Sally, we're resuming our big boom training in the corridor. Those hours that we generally fire from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, 10 through 14 October, we're going to have field artillery training. We're going to follow that up with more field artillery training, the 19th through the 20th, and then finish the month off on the 28th through the 31st. Appreciate our neighbors patronage with our big booms. It's critical training that we need to do, live training, so we have that. Just remind everybody, we have the second business helicopter United States with your Army airfield, averaging well over 1,200 flights out of there a month. So, critical training for our guard pilots occur out of there. We try to keep a lot of the low-level flying up on the other side of the Blue Mountain. And we have dark skies up there, fewer people, so it's a critical area for us. This past weekend, we had our 7th Annual March for the Fallen to honor the, excuse me, the fallen of the Pennsylvania National Guard 28th Division and all Pennsylvanians. We had over 686 marchers, and it does hear a very successful event. Continuing it on next year, matter of fact, the date for next year is the 28th of September of 2019. So, we look forward to having you all there. Just had our Military Affairs Committee meeting for the Lebanon Valley Chamber with a lot of our other veteran military-related partners of note, our main partner on post, the USO. They've got a couple very good programs they put on. One of them is Thanksgiving food for families, for military families. What they're looking for is donations, obviously. They can put them in the form of $25 gift cards. They're also looking for donations from some sponsors to give away turkeys. A lot of our younger soldiers and whatnot are in financial need on occasion. It's a great way to help them out. Also, for Christmas, they like to do a program. There'll be more information that they can provide on sponsoring military families for Christmas. They do that anonymously, and it's a very good program. Going on with our partners next door, with the VA. As of today, they always give me the amount of interments in the cemetery. This always gives you the magnitude, the treasure, and very solemn place we have with the VA Cemetery in the Gap. As of end of the month, they have 41,428 interments in that cemetery. So, very large cemetery. It's for the Mid-Atlantic. And in addition to that, they have 11,000 dependents that are interred there where there's many cases, the spouse can be interred with their spouse who is a veteran. So, very, very nice thing. Other than that, that's all I have for the Commission. Any good questions?
Gordon?
Dave, just technically, you've referred them to man days.
Man days.
What technically is a man day?
A man day is if we have Gordon come out to the Gap and train for one day. That's one man day. So, on that cumulative cycle for a day, if we had everybody in the room came, and that's 20 people, that adds 20 man days. That's the metric that we use, or the Army uses, to fund us of how much use we're getting for the Gap. But Gordon can be, if Gordon came two days in a row, that's different than what we count where I give that 153,000. You only get it counted as once.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? It took me many years, Gordon, to figure that mathematics out. Did take calculus in college, so, but that is a big metric.
Dave, just as an aside, you now that you mentioned the cemetery and so on, we had, recently had a meeting of our car club at the J and P Winery, and Josie and I were talking to a couple of our members there about how wonderful the Gap was, and the cemetery, and the memorial, and so on. And a couple of folks left the meeting that day and went to the Gap, and Josie and I got a real nice letter of how beautiful it was, how wonderful it was, and thanking us for suggesting that to them, so.
And a lot of people, I mention that with the Gap because even though in bracket 95, the cemetery dates back about that time, that there was a piece of the Gap that was realigned to the Veterans Administration. But how often I go around, in the communities, municipalities, people consider that cemetery as part of the Gap, even though it's not a federal agency. But the VA are very great partners with us, as in adjoining a federal agency, work hand-in-hand with our own Department of Military Veterans Affairs. We provide a lot of the honor of our funeral for funerals over there. Very, very wonderful place.
Yep, very nice. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Dave, thank you very much for coming and giving us an update.
And my question?
Yes, Gordon.
I'm not on the agenda. I was going to get on the agenda, but the subject I wanted to speak on, I did some research, and I was waiting for a phone call, somebody to call me back, and they only did that about 1:00 o'clock yesterday afternoon. So, I figured that's too late to get on the agenda.
You're certainly welcome.
I'm welcome, but I'm not on the agenda, though.
No, I understand.
Is that all right? But then I see last night on the Internet, it was a short meeting. So, I thought, well, maybe you want to hear what I have to say now instead of the next meeting, when it could be too hard, you know what I mean?
Yeah, right now.
Because I tend to run off the mouth, as you know.
Feel free, you want to.
Good, all right, real quick, I'll condense my presentation. Can everybody hear me? Is the camera on, Joel?
You got it.
Oh, before I start, you and I had a conversation a couple months about your videos, and I have to congratulate you. You're doing very well. So, you meet, you and I are YouTube stars, YouTube stars. What I want to talk about, Ames.
Yeah, just for the record.
Oh, my name's Martin Brondick.
Address?
2106 New Street in the village of Ebenezer, where, as you know, I'm honorary mayor. Very important man. What I want to talk about is something that affects everybody in this room at Lebanon County right now. It's probably the most hated thing on the earth, they're called mosquitoes. That's right. I've never seen a mosquito this bad. I mean, they're bad. And right now in Lebanon County, we have one death from West Nile, and you know that, and there's five people trying to recuperate. And West Nile is like Lyme disease. Even when you recuperate, and it's like malaria, it can come back their whole life. So, it's a very serious issue. Like I say, I've never seen this many mosquitoes, and of course, that is because it hasn't stopped raining in this county in three months. What has occurred in this county, listen to this, in the last three months, has never occurred in recorded history. Think about that. The weather bureau, I believe, is keeping records since 1888. This has never happened. Average rainfall in this county is 44 inches a year. We're beyond that. Baltimore just blew it, way beyond it, but on and on. But what I'm saying, I talked to the girl from Penn State Extension yesterday, and she comes in here and tells us about West Nile and mosquitoes. And I asked her, what program do you have? And she said, they go on a check for moshi- I said, no, what program? The first time I was ever in Florida was 1959, long time ago, and while I was in Tampa, and we went out to eat one night, and a guy lived there, he was driving a car, and I seen his truck. I said, what's that truck doing? Spraying for mosquitoes. I never heard of that. You know, around here, we didn't do that. So, that's basically the reason I'm here. I think it would behoove the Commissioners to get really involved in this and establish, maybe a committee or a commission to undertake a very serious spraying. I think that's the only way you can counteract the mosquitoes, I think. I'm not that firm.
They're doing scientific research in order to decide where to spray, in what order, because you can't do everywhere at one time. And it goes on regularly. The county Commissioners do sponsor the person who does the spraying, so we are actively involved.
You said the person. No, no, I'm talking about persons, big time. You can't go at this half-measures. I have asked, you can't do it. Because I'll tell you why. I've worked in weather all my life. I know weather. I know what it's going to do. The last five summers, if you take notice, the summers have been getting wetter and wetter and wetter. Right now, we have four seasons. Each season's supposed to get three months. Summer now gets five months. It took a month off the spring and a month off the fall. Ames, when you and I were young, we had beautiful springs and falls. We really don't anymore, but not for the last five, six years. In other words, the summers are getting longer. They told us how it's going to happen 40 years ago. They really did. You see, the summer we've had, last couple summers really, this isn't south-central Pennsylvania weather. This is southern Virginia weather. Everything's moving north. I read an article years ago, and it said, if we could live long enough, someday in this county, we will see palm trees and alligators in a Swetara Creek. Because is that the natural cycle of the planet? I don't know. I don't know what it is. Is it global warming? I don't know. Other theory is the government seeding the clouds. That's a big theory right now. I don't know what it is. I kind of think they're seeding the clouds myself, but whatever. But what I'm saying, trying to say, you can't go at this half-measures. You've got to go at it big time. Whether that takes hiring someone that does this custom spraying, to come in, be it by a truck, or by the air, or whatever, but that's my idea. I mean, you've got to form a commission or do something, because we've always heard about malaria and dengue fever and on and on, and we figure that's third-world country disease. No, 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 it's here. I mean, it's here, and it's scary. And one reason I'm here, I don't think in the last three months, a day went past and I get bit by a mosquito. Right now, Ronin offers, what, 103,000 citizens in Lebanon County, and I'll guarantee you, 129,955 have been bitten by a mosquito. The five people who haven't been bitten are sadly invalids and haven't been out of their bed for five years. Believe me, if they walk out at 6:00 o'clock at night, they'd get bit. So, and the weather's not going to change around. Weather forecasters are telling us are red, are red. This winter is going to be above-average warm and above-average precipitation. And if you have warm, the precipitation is going to be in rain. You know, so it's what has to happen, nobody wants to see it, we should have a bitterly cold winter with no snow on the ground, because the snow insulates that ground, and as much moisture's in the ground, we need that ground to freeze down at least two and a half feet, because it hasn't done that for quite a few winters, and that will drive the insects down. And I know the scientists say, no, that's not true. You talk to any old farmer, and he'll tell you the same thing. So, that's why I'm here. I'm just saying, I think it'd be something worth about to the Commissioners to look into, and because it is a health issue, it would probably be a lot easier to get some money to fund the program. Now, if you decide to do this program, I know where you can get some of the funding. Now, not all, or not near all, but at least enough to get the program up and running. But if you decide to do the program, we'll talk that out in a later time. So, do you think that's a good idea?
Again, we're already doing that, Gordon. We-
You're not listening to me. I said, what you're doing is not near big enough. This is a serious issue, and it's not big enough. It really isn't. You've got to come in here like they do in the southern states when there's no good swamp, and you've got to spray, I don't care from the air, from the ground, or what, but you've got to go, you can't go at this half-measures. And the way I talked to Olivia Bingham yesterday, what she's telling me, it's just really, really nothing. It really isn't. So, that's my idea, you know?
Well, I know during the season, there are two of them. She does have another person and a truck.
Yeah, one truck, Ames. The county's what, 365 square miles large? Not a small county, but still, one truck isn't going to do it. It really isn't. So, that's my idea. And if you don't do it, you know me and being a very, I'm a very mean-spirited program person, I'll go on to our LaBoucha register and say, hey, all you people, you like all them red welts on your legs, huh? So, you do with it what you want. That's my idea. A long line of great ideas, you know what I mean? So, that's my idea. I'm out of here, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Then we're ready for the minutes, Commissioner.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, and I'll second that motion. Are there any additions, additions? All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
We have a receipt on October 2nd and 3rd of $2,431,260.36. That brings us to a cash of $3,075,039.75. We had expenditures this week of $1,982,562.25. Our tax claim is $5,136.26. So, that raises a balance of $1,087,341.24.
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurer's report as submitted.
I'll second the motion. Any questions or comments concerning the report? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the Treasurer's report as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Treasurer's report is approved.
Okay. We have some debt service to approve.
Okay.
It's due by October 15th. We recommend you to approve the transfer of $9,085.09 from the general fund to the bank loan of 2006 at Wells Fargo Bank.
Salute.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Okay, recommending to approve the transfer of $353,580.09 from the general fund to the bank loan of 2008 at Wells Fargo. Okay, principal and interest.
Salute.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
The next one is to transfer $1,029,847 from the general fund for the bank loan of 2015 at Fulton Financial.
Salute.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Okay, and we need to approve the transfer of $873,281.22 from the general fund to the general obligation bond, series of 2015, 2015A at Fulton Financial.
2015A. Salute.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
The next transfer of $23,960 from the general fund is for general obligation bonds, series of 2016 at Fulton Financial.
Salute.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
And the last one to approve is the transfer of $138,124.37 from the general fund to the general obligation bond, series of 2017 at Fulton Financial.
Salute.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
We had the money.
We do have the money. It's been set aside for a while, so it's letting you know.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, Honor of Human Resources ladies, good morning.
Good morning.
Whenever you're ready.
Shalee Drew, Director of Human Resources. Leanne Chang, Human Resources Assistant. Personnel transactions under resignations and terminations. Ed Waters, Sir Rudy, full-time correctional officer, resignation effective September 27th. Jonathan Medina, full-time correctional officer, resignation, purposes of date correction to September 18th, 2018.
I'll salute. I think I'm missing a paper, though.
Well, I have a motion to approve the resignations and terminations. I'll second that motion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Opposed? So ordered.
Moving on to FMA and leaves of absence. Amanda Langer from Renova Suna, 36-day leave of absence, effective October 2nd, or returning, effective August 12th, returning October 2nd. Pamela Sunday, MDJ Dussinger's office, up to one year of intermittent FMA, effective October 23rd, 2018.
Salute.
All right, I have a motion, and I'll second the motion to accept those leaves of absence. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Under changes of status, transfers, and promotions, Taylor Stein Snyder, promotion from caseworker 2 in children and youth to child abuse investigator in children and youth, at the rate of $1,376.51 by weekly, effective October 8th. Barbara Moody, change of status from part-time court clerk in the clerk of courts to full-time general clerkcy in the clerk of courts, at the rate of $967.90 by weekly, effective October 8th. Rebecca Bozeman, transfer from DJ clerk at MDJ Verna's office to medical billing clerk at the prison, at the rate of $898.72 by weekly, effective October 22nd. Robert Gibson, transfer from maintenance mechanic at the prison to assistant detail officer at the prison, at the rate of $14.50 per hour, effective November 5th.
Salute.
All right, I have a motion to accept those changes in status, and I'll second that motion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Under other transactions, I have a motion to approve Planning Director Julie Shany's recommendation to reinstate a building code administrator 2 position, effective October 8th, 2018. This position was previously established at a grade 12 on the non-union salary chart at 35 hours per week.
Salute.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
MHIDEI would like to hire Janine Potter as an adult intensive caseworker 1, at the rate of $1,255.35 by weekly, effective October 8th.
Salute.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Moving on to Salary Board, motion to approve all transactions previously read, plus the following. Donald Kisthatten, one-time longevity payment, he's a full-time correctional officer at the prison. The payment is $1,250, effective October 7th. Tyler Workheiser, incremental increase telecommunicator in the Department of Emergency Services to the rate of $16.57, effective October 7th. And the following three telecommunicators, all to the rate of $16.57, all effective October 7th, and that is Caitlin Clay, Russell Weitzel, and Dustin McQuaid, and Jennifer Roscoe.
Salute.
All right, I have a motion in a second to make those Salary Board changes. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Mandatory conference seminars. Joseph Morales and John Wilson from Department of Emergency Services would like to attend the KIMA 2018 conference in Altoona, October 21st through the 23rd, $200 total registration fee. Lodging, mileage, meals, parking tolls reimbursement mandated by KIMA. Daniel Gray from MHIDEI would like to attend the Pre-Institute Session on EI Leadership Institute in Seven Springs, November 13th through 15th. Lodging, mileage, meals reimbursement mandated by Ockdale. Daniel Gray and Rhonda Shope from MHIDEI would like to attend CPR and first aid training in Lebanon, October 25th, $90 total registration fee, mandated by Ockdale. Daniel Gray, Kim Shaw, Brandy Poole, Brianna Rayner, Kayla Conyers, and Rhonda Shope from MHIDEI would like to attend Meeting the Needs of Children with Hearing Differences in Harrisburg, November 2nd, mileage, meals reimbursement, four credits, mandated by Ockdale.
Excuse me, what does that name stand for? I don't remember.
Ockdale? Um, I don't remember off the top of my head.
I just don't remember.
I have to find it for you.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll get it to you.
All right, thank you.
Julie Shany, John Fitzky, and Song Kim from Planning would like to attend the Penda Planning Partners Meeting in State College, October 22nd through the 24th. Lodging, mileage, meals, parking, reimbursement mandated by Penda. Jamie Rukowski, Samiaka Avila, and Christina Van from Probation Services would like to attend the ICOTS training in Harrisburg, October 23rd, meals reimbursement, six credits, mandated by KIMA. Cody Reese and Matty Klein from Probation Services would like to attend the Wounded Officers Survival Tactics in Lancaster, October 25th, meals reimbursement, and credits mandated by Firearms Education Training Commission. Dawn Cooten from Probation Services would like to attend Level 1 SVP Specialist Training in State College, October 23rd through the 25th. Lodging, meals reimbursement, eighteen credits, mandated by JCJC. Susan Christner, Dwight Penberg, Connie Dowhauer from Probation Services would like to attend the VA Conference on Juvenile Justice in Harrisburg, November 7th and 8th, $770 total registration fee, with parking reimbursement, mandated by JCJC. Brian Diedrich, Nicholas Sedamik, Elizabeth Judd, Elliot Katz, and Vienna Vespus from Public Defender's Office would like to attend the Advanced Cross Examination in Hershey, October 25th, $2,275 registration fee, six credits, mandated by PA Supreme Court.
Salute.
All right, I have a motion, and I will second that motion to approve all the mandated seminar attendance. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
And under requested, I have Teresa Bozeman, Jeff Bowler, Terry Hildebrand, Anne Devine, Melissa Martinez, and Janet Ross from Air Agency on Aging would like to attend the 2018 Protective Services Conference in Gettysburg, November 13th and 14th, mileage, meals, parking tolls reimbursement.
Salute.
And I will second that motion to approve folks to attend a requested conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
The Office of Child Development and Early Learning. Is that a name change? I just-
No. Department of Human Services.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, snap, sorry.
Like, if you really want to cut off your head, I feel like I'm cutting in line now.
The new person in the voter registration office. Mr. Anderson, we've been seeing you a lot lately.
Yes, you have. I will continue.
I know.
Michael Anderson, Chief Clerk of Voter Registration. Good morning. I'm here today to ask the Board approval for the approval of the November 6, 2018 sample ballots. These sample ballots are basically screenshots of the ibotronic voting machines that the voters will see on Election Day. We have five ballot styles for this election, and that is due to the three legislative districts that we have in the county, 101- 101st, 102nd, and 104th. And then in 27 of our 55 precincts, we do have a special election for the 15th U.S. Congressional District to fill Charlie Dent's, um, seat for basically a month and a half. And, uh, as everybody probably does know at this point, we are now in the ninth U.S. Congressional, ninth U.S. Congressional District County Walk. So there may be some slight confusion on that because some precincts will have, uh, the ninth U.S. Congressional District on their ballot. And at the very end of the ballot, they will have that special election for the 15th U.S. Congressional District. So we want best to try to form voters as much as possible. But that is why we have five unique ballots for this election.
I'll make a motion to accept the presented five different ballot ballots.
All right, and I'll second that motion. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the, uh, motion to approve the ballots indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
If you don't mind, I'd like to just have a couple of important things that are coming up for my office. I'd like to put on record. Um, the last day to register before the November election is Tuesday, Novem-, excuse me, Tuesday, October 9th. Uh, so anybody who would like to register, they would need to have that application postmarked by the 9th. Because we do not have to have that received, it has to be postmarked by October 9th so we can process that. Um, the last day to apply for a civilian absentee ballot is, uh, Tuesday, October 30th. In that case, that does need to be received by my office by that time, 5:00. And then the last day to actually, for us to receive a voted civilian absentee ballot is Friday, November 2nd, also at 5:00.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Now, since you're the only one left, it must be your turn. It's your turn. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the election board.
I'll second that motion, and we are adjourned. Sorry about that.
We're gonna adjourn the meeting.
Good morning, Ms. Howard, from the Probation Services Department. I'm just going to present a couple documents to you for approval and signature. The Juvenile Grant Aid Application, which includes a request for a total of $193,314 to be credited to the, uh, juvenile probation unit. Also, the equitable salary compensation agreement with the Juvenile Court Judges Commission. The proposed fiscal year 2018, 2019, uh, financial contract, or financial request contract through JCJC, as well as fiscal year 2017, 18, financial expenditure statements.
Now, are you asking for one motion for all of those, or separate?
Yes. All of the documents are included in the application process, so I'd be requesting one motion for all.
All right. I will make a motion to, um, accept and support the juvenile $193,314, um, the equalization and the financial reports and expenditures as presented by Sally.
I'll second that motion. Any questions or comments concerning the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
I would like, because the, uh, contract is static from the amount that we received last year. So it didn't go down. Did it increase, but it also didn't go down. It hasn't gone down for the last probably four years. Um, I need, uh, commissioner's signature. I also need, uh, that list of the general. All right? Uh, I don't think so. I need the judge's signature, but I got this. Do you have the signature that we're already using?
She's gonna need a pause.
I can probably be able to.
What does it do?
Probably an extra.
He's gonna be back today sometime.
Looks like Gordon has it.
Yes, Gordon.
I guess, Sally, I'm assuming money is used, uh, for staffing.
The money is required to be used for evidence-based practices in the juvenile field of corrections. So, um, the majority of that money is used to offset salary and benefits of community-based officers and school-based officers because that's considered an evidence-based practice, a best practice that you, you, um, conduct community-based supervision. A small portion of that, I'm gonna say it's probably between $7,000 and $8,000, um, is used for operational expenses. And those are expenses such as we offset our urinalysis testing. With that, um, we, we offset the cost of some, um, equipment that we use in the field. This year, we're purchasing another radio, a down radio in the juvenile unit. Um, we offset our training expenses. Our training expenses for juvenile are fully grant-funded. So all the trainings that our juvenile officers attend are funded through a juvenile court judges' commission grant.
Any other questions for Sally? All right. Thank you for coming in, Sally. Have a nice weekend.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a handful of things here. First being, uh, appointment to the Lebanon County Agricultural Land Preservation Board. Uh, we are recommending the following individuals for reappointment to their expected positions, and their terms would expire generally 31st, 2022. Patrick Kreiser, Livingston tenant Gary Lentz of Lebanon, and Mervyn Horst.
And Mervyn Horst. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
I have, uh, medical assistance transportation program driver contracts for Mario Paveglio and William Laird.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
I have an agreement between the county and Phil Haven Behavioral Health, Healthcare Services for Crisis Intervention and Information Services. The total amount of the contract is $810,480. And of that, $481,948 comes from sources from commissioned drug alcohol use children to services, MHIDEI, and the Action Partnership. The rest is drug and human services lottery.
I'll make a motion to approve the medical, uh, excuse me, the Phil Haven Crisis Intervention lottery, et cetera.
Second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
And lastly, I have one, uh, Disabled Veteran Exemption Request for Eileen Widener, a breed Ryer Driv in Myers Town, and the, uh, attached letter verifying the criteria.
I'll make a motion to approve Eileen Widener for real estate tax exemption.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
And you have 12 commercial deals accepted.
Twelve, seven.
I was gonna say, it's down.
They, they do a good job of working.
Still starting to work through?
Uh, as far as I know, yes. I have 1:30, and the last one's scheduled for 4:00.
Perfect. Perfect. All right, any, any other business that's come before the board?